Your arms are not going to get shorter.
Or longer.
Greetings, everybody. Welcome you to the Fayette County School Corporation Board of School Trustees Business Meeting, held today at the Administration Building, which is Tuesday, August 14th, 2018, at 6:30 PM. And I would like us all to rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to start out tonight by recognizing our 2018 Bus Rider of the Year. Katrina, you want to come up and share the good news?
Yes, we're going to have to give her her little trophy at school, but the Bus Rider of the Year this year, or last school year, was Ashley Sargent. I have a very nice letter from her driver, Carol Minnerick, and it says, "My nomination for Bus Rider of the Year is Ashley Sargent. Ms. Sargent is in the 5th grade at Fayette Central Elementary School. I have had the privilege, pleasure, of being Ashley's bus driver for two years. Throughout a very challenging and diverse year on the bus, she has maintained a positive and giving attitude. Her positive cooperative spirit is deeply appreciated, more than I can ever express. When asked to sit with specific students or help with tasks, such as helping with windows or comforting befriending the younger students, she willingly obliges without question or comment. Many of her peers and classmates have asked to sit with Ashley on multiple occasions because of her pleasant giving nature. She has an excellent rapport with everyone, especially the younger students who she visits with daily. Ashley is truly a shining diamond, a role model that every bus driver would enjoy having. I feel strongly that Ashley should be recognized for the extraordinary young lady that she is. Respectfully submitted, Carol Minnerick, FCSC Bus 13-04."
Great. Thank you. Sure she will look forward to the recognition at school?
Yes.
All right. I would like to ask a motion to approve the agenda as submitted and amended.
I so move.
Thank you. Ann, do I hear a second?
I'll say a second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Any patron comments on agenda items? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda, which includes the approval of minutes from the regular business meeting of 7/17/18, the special session of 7/24/18, and executive session of 7/24/18, the personnel report, including retirements, resignations, leaves of absences, et cetera, the approval of the July 2018 claims, 50501 to 50687, and Connersville Gymnastics request for Sunday AM gym events for October 20th and 21st, 2018, and January 5th and 6th, 2019. Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve.
Could I interject a comment?
Sure.
Could we have the, uh, the, uh, our rural committee, policy committee, take a look at that, D?
Take a look at it.
Take a look at D. I mean, we do that every year. We've been sending the same thing over and over and over again, just given it every year. I wonder if maybe the policy committee might take that up and maybe bring something back to the board.
To look at the, the Sunday morning events that our, our policy typically doesn't allow for?
Yeah.
Because we do allow it.
Can, can I interject?
Yeah.
At one time, that was allowed to be at the discretion of the superintendent to approve those, but there was a request from the board at that time to approve them all themselves.
I remember that.
And so that's why they now appear on here. We've had them for a long time, and the superintendent just signed off on that.
Even though there is a policy, apparently a policy, that says that they cannot use facilities on Sunday mornings.
But the board had designated the superintendent to be allowed to sign off on those amendments.
Yeah, let's have the policy committee take a look at it and bring it back to the board and see what this board wants to do. If they want to do something.
I think that's a fair idea.
Okay. Going ahead with the consent agenda. Anybody have a motion to approve the consent?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lori. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mark. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we'll now go on to the action items. Personnel report, recommendations for employment. Mr. Serkw.
Thank you. I have several tonight, so bear with me, please. Certified staff recommendations for employment, Alicia Vaughn, Head Start teacher at Grandview, Logan Boggs, English teacher at Connersville High School, Pamela Bowling, Special Education teacher at Connersville Middle School, Kim Carroll, math teacher at Connersville Middle School, Kim Duncan, math teacher at Connersville High School, Dick Leider, bringing Dick out of retirement as school psychologist on a contracted service, and he'll be working for the Centerville Fayette County Special Services, Tara Mitchell, preschool teacher at Grandview, Elizabeth Pennington, Special Education teacher at Connersville High School, and Jenny Richards, elementary teacher at Grandview. I might comment at this point, I believe we have 41 teachers, new teachers, that we hired this year, and I do appreciate all the help we've had, especially from the principals that did most of the interviewing of the initial candidates. Outstanding. Moving on to classified staff. We have a large number of classified staff we had hired. Leonard Baker, SRO officer, Andrew Blaze, SRO officer, Gage Bishop, maintenance, Caitlin Clark, Special Education Assistant at Connersville Middle School, Carla Combs, Special Education Assistant, Connersville Middle School, Kennedy Copeland, Education Assistant at Eastview, Claudia Couch, Education Assistant at Freyzy, Kelsey Crawford, Education Assistant at Connersville High School, Tim Davis, Education Assistant at Connersville High School, Crystal Frye, Nutrition Bus Aid at Eastview, Myra Gibbs, Preschool Education Assistant, oh, turn the page, at Maplewood. Then we have Ameda Gregory, Special Education Assistant at Everton, Laura Higgs, Special Education Assistant at Freyzy, Amy Holliday, Preschool Education at Grandview, Monica Jones, Physical Education Assistant at Connersville Middle School, Joey Loughlin, SRO officer, Rebecca Mays, Special Education Assistant at Eastview, Kyle McHenry, SRO officer at Fayette County School. And I might mention here, there are several that we have hired, but they're all not working at the same time. There's actually an eight-hour block of time for the middle school and elementary schools, so one week, one day of that week, someone may work an eight-hour shift, the next day they may work two four-hour shifts, so that's why there's so many of them. Destiny Mitchell, Special Education Assistant at Eastview, Zachary Morgan, Physical Education Assistant at Connersville High School, Ruthanne Munger, Educational Diagnostician for the Centerville Fayette County Special Services, Karen Oler, Custodian at Maplewood, Susan Pennington, Educational Assistant at Freyzy, Larry Shields, Special Education Assistant at Connersville High School, Susan Scholl, Education Assistant at Freyzy. Also extracurricular staff, we'd like to recommend Michael Thompson for the varsity baseball coaching position at Connersville High School. And also, you'll notice that we put in there a one-page copy of our existing compensation model for classified that we approved the last year, but with the addition of preschool, we needed to find a slot for them to go into, so we have inserted them, the new preschool teachers, not the Head Start, but the preschool, in that first section there, Level One, so that's where they would fall. And I think that covers me.
Mr. Serkw, are all of those SRO officers local?
I believe they all are.
Yeah, I think they all are.
Thank you.
And they all have to have completed their National School Resource Officer training.
I noticed we've got two math teachers out of retirement, both Kims, Kim Carroll and Kim Duncan. Thank you. I'd like to publicly thank both of them for considering that. They're both excellent teachers, and I hated to see them retire, and now that they're back, it's going to be such an asset to our, to our kids because they're both excellent math teachers. And retirement, retirement sounds good, but as you well know, yes, Mike. So that's really, particularly in the math area, if you have somebody with that kind of experience wanting to come back, it's just really great.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the personnel report.
Madam President, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Chris. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ann. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, permission to advertise for Capital Projects Hearing and the Bus Replacement Plan Hearing. Ms. Calum Tollott.
Thank you, Mrs. Jacobs. This is again your request, asking to advertise for the budget. It is a little bit different this year. The summary budget will be on the Indiana Gateway site only, which has been in the past. Previously, the entire Capital Projects Plan and the entire Bus Replacement Plan had to be advertised in the newspaper. This year, all that will be advertised in the newspaper is a notice to the taxpayers regarding the hearing and that in the website for Fayette County Schools, that they can go out and click on the link to take them to the Bus Replacement Plan or the Capital Projects Plan to review it. With doing away with the Capital Projects Fund and that moving to operations and the general fund becoming education, you will find capital expenditures in both the Education Fund, particularly related to technology-type equipment, computers or smart boards, and then the, like, classroom furniture, building improvements, will be in the Operations Fund. The Capital Projects Plan only requires expenditures of $10,000 per item or more to actually be identified in the plan. However, the plan that I've developed for your review kind of models the old plan where you see that the building are also going to get an allocation. You know, obviously, student chairs aren't $10,000 apiece, so you'll see those monies that don't rise to the level of requiring notification as a part of our plan, but those monies are identified by building. So it'll be different.
Is it like a bundle, like bundled together?
It is bundled together. So like, where we had to break things out previously by building, and you could not move money from building to building, now there's just a line in there for boilers with X number of dollars, and we later get to pick where that money might go. So by the same token, that flexibility is great, however, if there's an item that we need to purchase for $10,000, that costs $10,000 or more, I need be bringing those to you throughout the year to revise our Capital Projects Plan, which will then again require the notice to be advertised and the, the link to be updated on the website. This budget this year is a whole new ballgame for me. So this advertising is moving us into the technology age, but it will cut our advertising costs significantly, which is great, in my opinion.
All right. I would like to hear a motion to approve the permission to advertise for Capital Projects Hearing and Bus Replacement Plan Hearing.
I'll make that motion.
I've heard it from Lori. Second?
Sure.
Thanks, Warren. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, next we move on to another fun item, affirmation of the 2019 Support Staff Employee of the Year. Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. It was my honor to recognize this gentleman at our back-to-school meeting, and I did ask his principal, Mr. Small, to share a few things, but I wanted to share a funny story of how humble this man is. He was sharing with me later that he was sitting next to Doug Keller, one of the other custodians, and as I was reading all this information about the recipient, Gary said he leaned over to Doug and said, "That sounds like a really good guy." I'd be nuts, right, Gary? I mean, so that's how humble he is. Gary Patterson is just a phenomenal head custodian at Eastview, and I know they love him. I see how he interacts with kids and the love he has for our kids and the pride he takes in his job. And so I think the staff, what was unique about this is the whole staff nominated, which I've never seen that before, where they all signed that nomination letter. So that speaks a lot to you, Gary, so I'd just share a few words about.
Absolutely. Mr. Gary, come on up here.
Maybe an embarrassing story or something.
Thank you. It is my pleasure to have Gary here and to be able to recognize him as Support Staff Member of the Year. I started at Eastview five years ago, and one of the first hires I made was Gary Patterson. And so far, that's turned out pretty good for me. I've known Gary for even longer than that, and he's just a phenomenal human being, I'll say that. I was going to share the story that Scott shared. Gary was just saying, "Boy, I'd like to meet that guy." He does a lot of the things I do, or I like to do. So I'll tell you, though, Gary is out there with me every morning, giving the kids high-fives as they come into the building. One of his favorite things to do is to see how high he can get his. And if you notice, Gary isn't the tallest man in the world, so a lot of our 4th, 5th, 6th graders, he talks about getting on steps tools to train. It is absolutely a pleasure, though, to work with Gary every day. You'll see him in the hallways tying shoes. It's not uncommon to see him in the cafeteria opening milk. And not to mention that our building truly looks wonderful, and the initiatives that he's helped spur on since he's been there have been phenomenal, with J.D.'s support. I believe we've made Eastview look better than it ever has, and that's under, under this man's direction. I'll say that he epitomizes what it means to put kids first. I don't care what job he's in the middle of, if we radio, "Hey, we need X, Y, or Z," his response is, "I'll be right there." And that, that means a lot to me, and it means a lot to our teachers. And I'll finish by just saying what 4th graders said about Mr. Gary, because as, as Mr. Collins mentioned, we did nominate him as a staff, and that included, as a school, I should say. That included our students. We asked some of our students what they, why they think he's a good candidate, and they said, "One of our 4th graders says that there are just honestly too many good things to say about Mr. Gary. He is the definition of a wonderful person." And I would agree with that 100%. It's, again, my pleasure. Thanks, sir. Thank you.
I know that he had a couple of his fans come to the meeting just to congratulate him, didn't he? All right, that was great. Okay, I'd like to get a, a motion to pass the affirmation, I'm not even, I'm so excited about this. I'd like to seek a motion to affirm the 2019 Support Staff Employee of the Year.
Madam President, I'd be very happy to do that.
Thank you, Chris. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Ann. Any discussion?
The only thing I'll say is, my experience for my kids in school, the custodian was one of the first people they saw when they came in the building, and to this day, my kids remember their custodians, probably more so than they remember some of the other people in the building.
Absolutely.
We appreciate all you do.
Okay, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next action item is the resolution to accept transfer of property from Orange Township. Ms. Calum Tollott, round three or four.
Would it really be a board meeting if we don't talk about our orange property?
We're keeping orange alive.
So, it's been determined, which was suspected but not defined in the survey. So Marion and I thought we were the ones that were wrong, because the surveyor should be the expert in it. Well, they included in the survey, identified as Fayette County School property, .242 acres that actually belong to the township. So this resolution basically says, if the Orange Township approves a resolution giving us that property, we agree to accept that property. So Marion's working on getting the Orange Township to transfer that property to us, and we need to accept that property. And then our attorney will prepare all of the limited warranty deeds and all of the net information that's necessary, and then we'll be able to sell the property to the highest bidder.
And is that any concern? Is there any concern that, that Township won't?
No.
Okay.
Marion has indicated that there's no reason to be concerned.
Okay. Otherwise, we'll be back here.
So basically, we had a survey that was not quite right, and it didn't include some land that we kind of already sold, and it really wasn't ours?
That's correct!
Oh, cool. All right.
It happens.
It happens, it does, yeah.
Two tenths of, two tenths of an acre?
Uh, 2,400ths of an acre.
2,400ths of an acre.
Quarter of an acre.
Quarter of a quarter.
About a quarter of an acre.
All right, thank you. I'd like to hear a motion to accept the transfer of property from Orange Township, the resolution.
I so move.
Thank you, Ann. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mark. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now we will move on to discussion items. Board Policy 5.44, Crisis and Suicide Intervention. Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. For, uh, House Enrolled Act 1430 has some requirements for schools, and so we needed to update this policy with our suicide awareness and prevention. So I met with our policy committee with the board and shared the recommended language from our attorney and from the Department of Education, so it provides some more guidance for us in dealing with students who may be suffering from depression or some other issues where they may be, maybe some self-destruction or possess the danger to himself or to other students. So we have a five-step intervention procedure in place with stabilization, assessing the risk, taking appropriate action based on the risk, communicating with appropriate parties, and then the follow-up step is the last. And there's some guidance that talks about the development of a plan, where we work with other agencies, we make parents, or we help educate them, and we make sure the child's receiving that support. And then it also requires us, beginning this school year, that we provide two hours at a minimum of evidence-based in-service youth suicide awareness and prevention training every three years for employees who provide instruction to students in any combination of grades 5 through 12. So that's the biggest change, what the state's requiring, and they define who a teacher may include. They include superintendent, principal, teacher, librarian, school counselor, school psychologist, school nurse, the school social worker. So we are already on that piece with having the training, but this is something that places that in our policy. That's basically the gist of the changes. This policy has not been changed for a number of years, so this updates us to be compliant with the House Enrolled Act, and this is our first reading, so wanted to give you time to go over it, and if we have any other questions, we can answer those, and then we'll have a second reading, evidence point.
Had staff participated in any kind of training beforehand?
There had been training, but this is more specific, prescribed, where we document, make sure that we have that piece in place, and that's working through Mike's office with setting that up, so.
And how much time do we have? I mean, get everybody trained and go through this?
Well, I believe they have three years to meet that time requirement. So we require all of our staff to go through training every year. So it may be 45 minutes this year, maybe an hour next year, but in a three-year block of time, we'll have that timeframe met.
And then all new staff that's on board, they will be kept, will follow that and keep a schedule, that's who we are, in compliance, and have that documentation, that's very important with that training.
Have we been working with council through this process?
Yes.
Will that training be part of regular in-service or aside from that?
It will be part, some of the training, I think, will be site-based, but some of it will also be provided through a program we use, where we provide a lot of the school trainings through videos, which the, the House Enrolled Act recommends, so teachers and staff can do that on their time when they have that time. And then there's documentation, there's an accountability piece with that as well, that we maintain, so there's some flexibility there. Any other questions? So this is just the first reading, so there's no action required today.
Thank you. Okay, next discussion item, the CHS Design Review from Danny Howie. Mr. Collins.
Thank you. We have two gentlemen here, we worked with them, and Bill Payne and Mike Schiff, and so I think, Bill, you're going to start off, and they do have information here at your places, and there will be a PowerPoint as well for reference. So excited to hear this.
Yeah, great. Madam President, Board Member Superintendent Collins, we're pleased to be here this evening to give you a design update. My role is project executive, so ultimately the leader, but here with me tonight is Mike Schiff. Mike is a principal and an architect in our firm. He's leading our design team efforts and has been working with your staff, as well as leading our design team efforts in refinement of the concept design that you all had seen back at the end of June. So we're moving very quickly, so we're pleased to be here tonight to show you a refined version of that concept, receive feedback, get questions and comments answered. We'll be back in September to provide a more finalized view of that design. Then we are hopeful to receive bids and actually be under construction yet this year, so that's our plan at this point. So without further ado, I'll turn the floor over to Mike Schiff.
All right, thank you, Bill. All right, usually the first presentation, you have to get used to the equipment, so there we go. We'll try this, so. There we go. Well, we started off with actually having great meetings with staff. I was pleasantly surprised, meeting in the summertime and having 22-year staff members come in and meeting with us, so it was a great compliment to Mr. Collins and Mr. Duncan and the other leadership at the high school, for all these coaches and, and people who were interested in, with regards to discussions. We met with 12 athletic groups, and there were representations there, both men and females, boys and girls teams, so we had a great cross-section. The only person, the only group that wasn't represented at the time was tennis, but they had great proxies there, and everybody was looking out for each other, so you should feel very good about your coaching staff and athletics, so just, it was a good meeting. We, we had a, it was a, there was a lot of people there for one time, so we were, we were challenged, it wasn't, you know, it was, it was, I wasn't herding cats, it was nothing like that, but everybody was very respectful, and it was actually good dialogue and good conversation, and we got a lot of great feedback from them, so, and that's showing in the, in the development of the plans. So they were, they were terrific. I think everybody's familiar with, with this aerial shot. If you look to, you know, the challenge here is, is anytime when you touch an existing campus or facilities, there, there's things that rise to the top with regards to challenges. We knew there'd be some things that we'd have to address, and we're putting some strategies together, and I'll cover those momentarily, but if you, just, just keep in the mindset, currently you have a courtyard that's on the outside of the building, and, and you have an exit out of that courtyard towards the north and towards the southwest, so just keep that in mind as we move forward. So as we begin to potentially plan for the Spartan Activity Center and future planning for administration, then you, and you see in blue, so the purple and the light green is what we're looking to have under construction yet this year, so that's our goal, and, and with working with staff. So you begin to see we're, we're beginning to enclose that, that courtyard. So you begin to see we're beginning to enclose that courtyard. If I haven't mentioned the word courtyard yet, I'll mention it a few more times. Once we begin to wrap this courtyard, and actually it needs to be enclosed, and what we mean by that is secure. So once we've done that, we have created a new space, and the code will actually look at that outdoors courtyard space as an interior space. So with that, and the challenge here for everybody in the room, you see all the red arrows on that diagram? Those are all current exits that exit into that space. The blue arrows are the ones that exit outside around the perimeter. Those really benefit us and help us. But once we exit into that space, now I have to take into consideration, it's not me, it's that code that gets in the way sometimes, but that's why we have safe buildings from fire, and say, you know. But the key here is, I'll give you an example. A typical classroom, let's say it was 900 square feet, and you, as your leadership for your district, knows that you don't have to have more than 30 students in that classroom. The code reads that as square foot per person, so that classroom actually accommodates to 45 people. So that's what we have to calculate leaving that classroom. So all of a sudden, it becomes cumulative. So if I have a classroom here, a classroom here, that's 90 people. In reality, it's probably more like 45. So you begin to see how this snowballs. Now, when all these people exit these red arrows into this courtyard, and once we enclose it to the north and with the addition to the south, now we've got to have a strategy of exiting out of that courtyard. So we've been working with our code consultant, who helps write codes for the International Building Code, and some of my review of the documents and review of the code, and we do this every project. Once we have a more better strategy in place, we'll meet with the local fire chief, and we do that on all of our projects to go through that as well as the administration. But anytime you have, believe it or not, we have approximately 1,900 occupants leaving the building and going into this courtyard. That doesn't even take into consideration the courtyard space, which we have to accommodate. So you can see how it gets complex pretty fast. But we were counting on this, so we have strategies in place to deal with that. So whether it's exiting back through the fieldhouse and/or exiting through number two, you can see the exit number two there. Honestly, 99% of the time, everybody's going to exit through the number one. But in that case, if that exit's blocked, we have to provide other means of exits out of that space. So now you, it's, that's how it's done. And the state looks at that, International Building Code looks at that courtyard, even though there's no roof on it, as an interior space, because you've not left the building yet, because we stopped to get out to the program. So, did I explain that okay? Is that, yeah, but that's our job. That's why we're the experts when it comes to building code and figuring that out. And once again, like I said, once we have the quantity and understand all the existing walls in your building with what's rated and what's not, and we've already have a good plan in place, we already know what those are, we'll have additional meetings. So that's forthcoming.
This is just projected, though, right? It's 1970. We haven't had over 1,100 people at the high school in 20 years.
Code doesn't say that. It's based on square foot, not per person, but you're right. And that, in some instances, causes us hardship. So, but that's why we have safe buildings, safe schools with regards to fire exiting and, you know. So in addition to the exiting, we're looking at security as well. And one of the conversations we've had with regards to creating layers of security, that's always key with regards to barriers and slowing down any person that wants to, in most cases, it's a I rent parent, or maybe it's a irate architect like me. The key there is, we're looking at having three levels just with this addition before you get into the original school building. So you can see, we can buzz somebody in at the exterior doors, and those doors will be, you know, maybe from 7:30 to 8:30, they're unlocked, but at a certain point in time when that bell rings and that school starts, the outdoor and the door number two is permanently locked, and now somebody has to actually physically be buzzed in. Then we have an interior vestibule, a layer or two, that creates another barrier. Then, once they enter that, what we call this little commons or entry area, there's another layer. So that's a strategy we're putting in place to really begin to bring you up to what we've been doing on new buildings and other buildings for some time. The benefit with this, let me describe area number two, we may leave number one open during sectionals, and if you're selling tickets, we're looking at planning the athletic office at the very northwest corner of that, so we can actually have people come into the vestibule and still have number two locked down and buying tickets. So there's a lot of value and strategy that we've been discussing with staff already, and how we handle that, so those patrons don't have to go all the way to other locations inside the building. So we keep them right there in a controlled vestibule. So that's what we're doing there. So as we begin to look at the layouts, we're looking at the AD office to the north, if we're looking at the left side of the page, we have a women's restroom, because we are planning on having competition events here, maybe it's freshman basketball, maybe it's volleyball, you know, some JV events, maybe whatever, but we don't want to limit that. So we're looking at some, what we call tip and roll bleachers areas. We did that at Batesville, we did it in Zionsville, where you can move them out of the way off to the side, very easy to accommodate. So we have to have some restrooms for public, and then we have a couple of small dressing rooms that accommodate 40 athletes or and/or PE, so, because PE is, discussions with the PE department, they want to say, see a space like that, they don't want to use this, and they shouldn't be using it. We don't want to have any limitations as far as that, and I think you'll see that tonight. And then, and you continue down the page, the men's restroom, and then we'll have some storage and concessions. We're looking at concessions that serve both the Spartan Activity Center, as well as having an overhead door on the outside that could serve the soccer field, and so you get some additional value there. So, and that came, I wish I could take credit for that. I think that was Mr. Collins, so. So as we begin to look at, we had lengthy discussions on types of floors, what they want, staff wanted, and here we go. We were looking at wood floor, competition floor to the far west, and the others being synthetic floor, probably like, you probably heard the term mondo, that's a manufacturer or rubber floor. So we'll bid several people against each other, so we get a competitive bid, so we get the best value for you. So we're looking at that. So that's, if you, so what I'll say, everything from the darker shade area to the right on that screen will be a lot more flexible as far as usage, and you'll see it as we go through some of the other activities we're anticipating. There's been, one of the staff's, the staff's comments, and they've seen at several other schools, is the transition between the wood and the rubber products. So I've assured them that it's going to be a flat condition, so. So this is the actual detail. So it's getting in the weeds a little bit, but you can see the level of detail that we've had conversations with staff. So you begin to see the wood on the left side of the image, and the aluminum transition, and then what we call the rubber, that dark gray to the left of the black line. That black line on that photograph is actually expansion material. So that's an inch of expansion, and then there's always another area for the wood floor between the expansion, so there's actually two inches of expansion right there. So you begin to see the wood, I'm a woodworker, wood moves, you know, so we have to accommodate that. So, and the other thing I want to point out, it's been, and I'll do it, I think, in the next photograph here. So this, and I can tell you, this is actually at Batesville, when we did their recent Student Activity Center, and this is a Batesville photograph. You can see, this will be a simple look as far as the flooring conditions with the flat transition between the wood and the rubber floor. We had a talk with the track and field department, they're looking, they want a slight texture on the track surface, which I understand is to give them a little bit better grip for running. You know, they didn't want the medium or heavy texture. I discourage the last two because it's harder to clean, because whenever you have a textured floor, then you have that, those pebbles, it's kind of a little bit more of a root floor, but this is a modest that you can get a scrubber on, flat, easier to clean. So those are the, once again, those are discussions we had with Mr. Duncan and his team with Grubbs Athletics. So you could also, one of the other things we had talked about with, you know, is becoming a shooting game, a shooting league in the NBA, whatever else. If you look very surgically on those images, you can see some faint brown lines on there. So we're looking at having three-point arcs on all the goals, but we pan the color of the wood floor and/or the synthetic floor with just a slight variation, so they're not, you can be very, when you start laying over all these lines on these courts, it can get pretty confusing and/or busy. So we've got strategies in place to address that as well. So if we were looking at just the layout again, you see the competition court to the left with the wood floor, we're anticipating six goals. You can see the big arcs, you know, they're faint, but in each of the goals, there are three-point shooting. Then the middle court only has two goals, and then the fourth court to the east has six goals again. So it's a little bit more than we anticipated, we may have to consider a couple of those as alternates, but as we get more of the plans developed and get more numbers coming in, we'll get that sorted out. But that's our plan, regardless, the structure above will support that. So that's what, that's future, that's what we call planning. So if we looked at tennis, you really want to play tennis on a rubber floor versus a wood floor, so that, you know, it will be accommodating tennis. And I think I failed to mention, the three basketball courts before also have three full-size volleyball courts, and they'll have the same orientation, the north-south. So you have one on wood floor and two on the rubber smooth floor, so back in my volleyball days, you can still dive and not hurt yourself too bad on a smooth rubber floor, so. So if we look at PE purposes, you begin to see that the staff wanted six badminton courts. So we'd be looking at putting what we call tick marks, these, and these are laid out for doubles, that's one of the requirements. The tick marks are little marks, permanent marks on the floor, like in the corners, but you begin to see, we paint out all those lines on there for those couple of weeks that they're doing badminton, it gets pretty busy, so they can do washable paint and/or tape or something like that. So that's what we're, those are the types of things that we have planned for. And you begin to see all the activities that could occur at one time. If you look at the badminton courts, there's actually gym divider curtains that come, that spend down, kind of create a curtain between the basketball courts and/or badminton courts, in this case, or tennis courts or volleyball courts. So it doesn't, we don't have them on the ends of the courts, but we have them on between the courts, so, you know, the balls don't go flying on the other activities, and that's pretty common. So we can accommodate walking and jogging on the perimeter, a basketball or full-size volleyball court at the same time, a gym divider curtain, then a three badminton courts in the middle, then a gym divider curtain, then a badminton court, potentially another gym divider curtain, then a fitness area and/or dance or aerobics. So you begin to see how flexible this space can be and accommodate a lot of needs. I should point out that there's a lot of discussion with the fitness area, whether it's once to be enclosed or open, and the staff overwhelmingly wanted it open at this time. But we plan for it, if it comes an issue, we can enclose it, so we kind of locate it at the end. The key is supervision is the key, flexibility for kids moving in and out of those spaces, so, you know, but right now, right now, it looks, wants to be an open space. They thought more open space, the better, and that's the direction that we've tailored that. If we look at track and field, all right, we have, we have an area, we're looking at a long jump area and a pole vault area. So the long jump would have a pit cover, so 98% of the time, that pit cover is over the top, and it conceals what's down below. So that, and we put that off to the side, so it's, you know, it's a little bit better for maintenance. The pole vault area is just another, they have the pit box, and it has a cover on it, so it will have the same rubber as the adjacent floor, so will the pit cover for the long jump. All you see will be that, once again, that aluminum around the perimeter, so you know where that is. But the key here, it's not in the running track, it's not on any of the courts, so it's off to the side, and it's, it doesn't have any impact, especially if it's set up for an extended period of time, like 30 days in the winter time when they're doing some of the activity or. So then, we also looking at putting a discus net in, a throwing net that captures that activity, and we also have the free floor space for the high jump to the lower right. And the question may be asked someday, it's about 9.8 laps around four mile. And I think the football team was talking about 40 yards brands in PE, so my time of 5'1", I could sprint from, well, that was about 30 years ago in my glory days, but we have about 56 yards on one of those straightaways, so I'm confident that we could do some 40-yard times inside. Then, how about baseball, golf, and softball? So, you know, when we don't have all these extra, you can begin to see the, how these basketball goals fold up. Now you can see how potentially in the middle, we can locate two batting cages and use those for both softball, baseball, and these nets are designed so they're real small holes in the nets, so you can actually use them for golf, too. So we left no one out. So Bill will be excited about that, because he don't like golf. I'm no longer invited, I don't know why, so.
And these will all be suspended from the ceiling.
These will all be suspended from the ceiling, so. And one of the other things that we've learned, that there's a lot of coaches that like hitting practice, they like hitting the pepper practice into the net, so we can, you begin to see where those red arrows go, you can set up two lines of athletes pitching and hitting the balls right into those nets. And the other benefit is, we have the gym divider curtains on each side of those batting cages. So what happens is, when the balls hit those batting cages, then the batting cages move a little bit, so if somebody's not walking by, we can actually have another safety barrier. So these things are all, we've put together all these strategies to minimize any potential impacts. So the exterior of the building, we're still working on this, but we're looking at a, currently at a split-face masonry unit similar to what you already have on the west end of your most recent addition, a metal panel up above, so we have masonry on the inside of the building as well, up to about 10 feet. If you saw that at Greensburg, you'll see that at a lot of other facilities. The key there is durability, so we need that, we need that masonry down low, so. If they're throwing baseballs and softballs and other events, discus, yeah. So I was an 18-year-old one time, so, yeah, I got to prevent some of the things that I wanted to try and do, so. So we're looking at a metal roof, and then, and as we look at the entrance, the new main entrance at the southwest corner, we're looking at an awning out there, and that will essentially be the gateway into your campus, this building structure, so. I'll be happy to answer any questions. I'm confident I can figure my way to go back on this mouse here, so. As Bill mentioned, we'll be back next month as well to give you more details.
This is going to be a scheduling challenge for Mr. Duncan.
I'm widely to accept. In our high school staff, they're already talking and looking at, there are a lot of things that we'll work with. They've done this a lot, so they'll give us some good advice, too, on traffic flow and all the different things we will contend with, so. It will present a challenge, well worth it, though.
How does the, how do the floors get cleaned? I have this image of like, what is it on, in hockey, the Zamboni, whatever that thing is.
Zamboni.
Yeah.
They have one. It looks like a Zamboni, but it cleans floors. It's really cool.
So is that what cleans the rubber?
That's what it would clean the floors.
Scrubber.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're fun to dry.
Yeah. Yeah, some of the shoes are, you know, the students will wear are, they tend to, you know, you may have, may instill a no blacks sole shoes, you know, they have tendency leaves to mark, depending on the quality of the shoe, so. But we'll get that figured out, and those will come up with scrubber.
Yeah.
So.
Well, you got the colors right. After having gone to pirate country and green country, it's nice that you got the red.
I don't know which image it was, I think a lot of them. It shows after the entrance, you have one, two, and three.
Yes.
Are these all offices in this?
Yeah, we're, we're still in your early planning. Yeah. There's been some discussion with Mr. Collins about having some of the add-in be more positioned out towards the new front of the door.
Okay. That's not decided yet, that's just an idea.
Another step when we're doing that, and the discus, to really look at how their needs could be better than that.
So we want to make sure, whatever we decide that we plan for at this point in time, so we don't, you know, we don't, all the dollars are in place where we don't have to do any selected demolition to meet any future planning, so.
So students that are coming in from the new, through the new entrance, and let's say they're going over to one of the other buildings, to Orange or whatever, they're going to cut right through all the one, two, three entrances, and then through the center of those, what is currently, no. They'll go left into?
Yeah. There's actually a quarter right into, we don't show it on the next plan. Yeah. There's actually a quarter right into, we don't show it on the next plan. Yeah.
Right above waterloo.
Yeah, there's a quarter.
That way we have more effective use of those office areas that Mike started to lay out, as opposed to taking up space to pass through there.
Yeah. Yeah, we want to control that.
Of course, Randy, if your office is right there, that would be interesting with 1,100 kids going by, you're waving, you could wave at everyone.
They'll wave at me now.
Yeah. Put a big window there.
No, that's...
That'll be our major problem.
The area around the running track, you said you would have enough space to do the portable bleachers, so we could use it for elementary league or something like that if we needed to.
Yeah. Why don't we go back to the basketball court layout?
Probably the three-row bleachers, remember like we saw.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and that's what we had down at the old boys club, basically, that kind of space.
What we've done is, what typically, the two courts that really accommodated is the one to the left, obviously, the competition, because those could sit right on the track surface, because you're not running. If you have a competition of bands or something like that, you can sit right there. The other one would be on the opposite side, or you could put them at the ends as well. So you have some flexibility. The one in the middle is not as accommodating.
No.
So, but we do have, you know, if you want to do the first two courts, you put up the gym divider curtain on the far left, and you can actually extend those, have those bleachers sitting on the third court to the east.
Yeah, that's true.
So that's, you know, could we put more space in between? But that's more square footage, and that's beyond where we are budget-wise. So...
Just so long as there's room enough for what we've had, because the elementary leagues have terrible times finding good places to play, and there's competition with so many other things. And the concession area would allow them to make a little money also.
Yeah. Just so you know, we've talked about having height adjusters on all those goals, too. So...
Oh, cool.
So they'll be able to, the basketball goals will extend anywhere from eight to 10 feet. So...
Oh, great.
So I may still be able to dunk on an eight-foot goal.
I noticed the orientation is square. And when we first looked at it, we looked at possibilities of that offset thing that a couple of us couldn't do. But I didn't know if that was a decision made with the coaching staff.
Yeah, I think this is, I think ultimately, this meets with everybody's approval. I gave up on that, I'll admit.
I still like it.
Two of you can think that way.
Scott, are we going to discuss this as a group, the board, or is now the time to ask questions?
You're welcome to ask questions.
Well, I got a couple of things. Unisex bathrooms instead of male and female, maybe?
Yeah. Let me address that, because what we have done is, and I'm going to walk up here because you begin to see that we have a, what we considered a separate facility right here. It's a, we considered a unisex, or somebody who has some private concerns that want to, it will have lockers in it, it has a shower in it, and it has a toilet in it. So during the school day, if you have a student that wants more privacy, that could be, that could be designated for that individual or individuals, depending on timing. Then after, after school, during events, it could be a coach's and/or official's room to dress. So there's some flexibility. And during competition events, when you have that, that could be a family restroom. So that's, that's what we've done at Batesville, that's what we've done at, we began to, we've been doing that for some time to, just to try to accommodate those needs.
So that plus a men's room and a ladies' room?
Yes.
What were your thoughts on that, Mark?
Just that we needed to consider that.
At least you have one.
Yeah.
Okay. You weren't looking for more than one, just at least having one.
Yeah. Right. Then I guess the other concern I had was the discus area in the middle floor, which would be next to the wood floor.
Yeah.
I'm worried about the wood floor.
And you should be. So the strategy on this is, it's actually a complete enclosure. And then we have, there's a series of nets, and there's another net that drops down. So there's actually, if you drop this, and this is actually a complete encasement of nets. So it almost looks like a discus throw outside, but it's all nets. So that's how that works.
Our pay have indoor disc and indoor shots. We can actually go on Spartan Bowl four for lunch.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, we won't.
Same we won't.
Okay. Just thinking, I'm just...
Another question I have. We've got a lot of things listed here, looks great. We've got the runway, the nets we've been talking about, and different things. What is included in the price that you quoted?
Right now, yeah, I understand. Right now, everything we're planning on showing you is included. We may have some alternates to make sure we protect the budget. For instance, we probably weren't anticipating all the goals.
Yeah.
Those are usually about $7,500 apiece. But we can, we're planning for it and getting the design of the roof framing to support that. We'll bid it as an alternate. And then on bid day, you can decide whether or not we can, we can go ahead and buy them now, or we have to defer four goals down the road. You see how that works?
Yeah.
And four goals would be, you know, about $30,000.
Are we including any scoreboards?
Yes, yeah. I think the, excuse me, we will have two at the main competition court, and then one at the other two courts on one end. And we put, conduit in, it's better to put the conduit in so you can add two more down the road. And when you get a deal with somebody else down the road with regards to school boards or advertisement or something like that, we can take care of that.
Thank you.
But the key is, we're planning for it now.
Was Brian at the meeting?
Yes.
Facilities?
Yes.
Oh, he's here. Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I know he had some good input when we were looking at the buildings.
Yeah. We will have a follow-up, what we call an engineering meeting with Brian. It gets really detailed with mechanical, electrical, plumbing, things like that.
Well, I asked if he was there.
Yeah. You're welcome to attend. It's a dry meeting. You've been warned.
Well, will this facility have the electronic capabilities like Wi-Fi and all that stuff? So when it's actually used as a classroom, will the kids be able to use their electronic devices?
I can address the answer. Yeah, we're planning for that, because we've already had meetings with the technology department. And we're looking at having a cabinet location and wires access points throughout. So the answer is yes, and it better. It's just the way it is.
Do you have an idea on the lifespan of the rubber, the rubber track and courts?
It's probably about 20 years.
Okay.
20 years. What happens is over time, it gets a little bit harder, it loses a little bit of its tooth on the pedal texture. But we see Mondo floors, 20 years old, they're still serviceable.
What's the cost of replacing one of those?
Well, I want to give you a unit cost.
Sure.
Usually, you know, it's all, and wood and Mondo, believe it or not, wood and rubber products are about the same cost. So they can, depending on the system, but a rubber floor should be about $11 to $12 installed.
Square foot.
Square foot. Thanks, Bill. Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And it depends on timing, location, availability. There's a lot of other factors as, from the standpoint of environment, what the current bidding environment is.
Right, right.
And workloads. So there's, can't get too specific. Yeah, so that's the way it is.
Yeah, I don't know if, I don't know if you had an opportunity, did you visit Greensburg?
I did not.
Okay, that's 15-year-old floor, and it's still very serviceable at this point.
Very, really good. The whole building for its age was in remarkable shape. And they had to add even air conditioning in. So a lot of it looked a little strange to us because they put in the air conditioning conduits and the like. And ours will be put in to begin with.
And we talked about the lighting, and I was looking at that page with all the, a lot of light, a lot of natural light to get in there.
We will have on the south side elevation, some, yeah, we will have, the metal building manufacturer actually has a window system, but we'll specify the glass because we want a little bit higher performing glass. And usually in this case, it'll be what I call almost a frosted glass, because you don't want to direct sunlighting. You really don't need home court advantage, know where to shoot from certain points during, you know, during the time of the day. But that would be more of a frosted glass look, is what we recommend at this time.
So you don't get the glare?
You don't get the glare. That is, that is correct. And we may, here's a case where we may have to not have all of them and have a few of those as alternates, just because you have an opening that's more costly. But we need more information, we got to develop more plans, too. It's all in the works.
How many fans will be in the field house?
That was brought up by your staff. We hadn't talked about it internally yet. I have, but if we were to introduce fans, we'd probably have three fans in each of the courts. Yeah. And I'll say it, the manufacturer name is big.
Big-ass fans.
Thank you. There you go. Usually in this Royal Stadium and other places in the coming courses, they just move very ser, but what happens is they move the air so it doesn't stratify, it doesn't get, so it actually is very comfortable. And we did that at Southmont, because we're looking at putting fans at Southmont.
And how many watering stations will there be in the field house?
Yeah, you're talking about drinking fountains.
Right.
We would, Kobo tells we have to have a minimum of two. Normally, what's, just so for the group, is one of them will have a water bottle filler. So no one really uses drinking fountains.
Oh, cool. Yes.
They'll have a water bottle filler. And then we have to accommodate handicap accessibility. So one will have to be low, then have accommodate guys like me that can't bend over as well, a little bit higher. So there you go. That's the, that's how it's done. Yes, sir.
Sir, all those, all those inner doors, I'm looking at kind of a security thing. Are all those equipped with the new super-style security locks that actually anchor into the floor, like on the Sandy Hook locks, that, you know, those inner doors?
The more we have the level of security doors?
Yes. And also the administration doors, the office doors, where people could be.
No, we've done a lot of security doors. And I'll have to check into that specific hardware. That's probably what's called a multi-latch system.
One that goes into the door. There's no way anybody can get into it from the outside.
Yeah. On the outside, the key is when you have double doors, is to have either a fixed molyn between the doors or a removable molyn. That's the best way to secure those doors, in lieu of having just a gap between the doors. So that's, but when it comes to high security, we'll have to have additional conversation with your resource officer and move down to that level. And we have not yet provided the additional multi-lock, only in areas where tornado refuge and other things, and we need, we've done schools out, other parts of the country where much more prevalent for tornadoes, and we have those called three, that requires three latches.
I know that when we were looking and we were eager to hear what all the coaching staff would say about locker rooms, and I see there's a couple locker rooms, but, and this may be more addressed Brent and his crew, that was it thought that if this is used for gym classes, they would use the existing locker rooms, that this is just for outside events?
Yeah, we discussed a little bit, it's a nice sunny day, you know, it's planned to use a five-second long for the locker room over. You don't have to worry about bringing their clothes or books to someone for getting in the gym, then they go over to the locker to be dressed, and now you've got to get somebody back over. Then if it's rainy day, they've got to have alternate plans to just stay over there, immediately get to the gym and wait for cardio.
Okay. It's exciting.
It is.
Very exciting. Sounds like you had a good meeting with all the coaching staff, and they got, gave you some great input.
I agree. They were, the more input we have, it establishes proper frameworks for us to work from. So...
How soon can you start?
Well, we've started, so there you go.
How soon, how soon can we, can we?
Can we schedule the first game?
Can we schedule the groundbreaking and then the grand opening, I guess? About how long is that timeframe between?
Okay, so we live in Indiana, so don't schedule any.
No, I know.
In fact, our plan is at this point, everybody's been so good, we're moving very quickly. We would like to get bids this fall, and be under construction this fall. A building of this nature, it could take 12 months approximately to construct. But again, that's weather dependent. So if we get a horrible winter, and things come to a halt because we can't work, it's below freezing, that could be a problem. But that's the plan right now, is to be under construction late November this year.
And as far as interference with the high school as it exists today, it was my understanding that this would cause minimal interference with their everyday situations over there now.
So that'll be a discussion that we'll have. We'll bring our construction administrator on board and talk through how that's phased, because clearly, we want to keep the constructor and the contractors away from students and staff, and we want to make sure it's safe for students and staff. So we'll have to figure out sort of that interim plan, so that we keep students and staff out of the construction site, and yet allow normal activities to go on.
But this is a new construction site, so basically, it's not going to be interfering with the existing structures.
Yeah, except at some point, as Mike's labeled up, number three, you know, we're going to have some interference, that we're going to have to have an interim plan for that. That's what I'm doing.
But the school, the actual functioning of CHS at the time of construction is not going to be altered on a day, on a day-to-day basis.
We would not anticipate that, no.
I lived through the reconstruction at the middle school for three years, so...
Ingress and egress will be impacted.
Yeah.
With their traditional traffic flow.
Yeah. No, but you're not going to have classroom problems or those kinds of things.
Yeah, we're not going into, we're not going into Waterloo, Columbia, there'll be changes in there. We'll be outside of that.
And some of the connection, I was talking with Mike about that, something like number three there, that entrance, that may be done in the summer when students aren't present to try to minimize that. So hopefully the timing will work with some of that.
Well, it's just bad thoughts of old times.
This won't be like that.
No, I didn't figure it would be. But it's just, we have more students on campus, and it's just so difficult when you're trying to keep it some sort of normalcy when you're in construction. So...
Kids are going to have to walk a greater distance to get to the career center, things like that. Some of the parking areas are going to be impacted. And that's going to be a give, but the payoff, I think, will be worth that.
We do have some timeline, though with the Common School. We do have to have 50% of the proceeds bid within the first year, so we better hope for good weather. It's not a traditional bond where we've issued bonds, and we have received the proceeds, and we're holding them here. We have to hit those targets, too. So...
Pray to all the weather gods.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Joyful for everybody, I hope, that, that to see this, who's here. Now we will move on to the public comments. Persons wishing to make the board aware of suggestions, ideas, and their comments may address the board at this time. Comments which involve personnel or students must be discussed in private. Seeing none, we will move on to report items, superintendent discussion groups reports, principals, directors reports.
Hey, Bert, I just want to, I'm excited to have the baseball coach on staff. Michael, I know, Michael, for a long time, Michael's actually a senior high school when I got here. So, but he saw a lot of connections in the college ranks and in the professional ranks. So I think he could tap into it. If he's got questions, and I know he's already been, so at least one place to focus on involved. I don't know if he wants to say it anymore, but we're excited to have him on. Possibly, possibly an assistant coach that behind him. I know he's going to get talked to.
He's right now here.
He's at least here in support.
Oh, he's got.
He's got a baseball guy on him. There might have been some behind-the-scenes communication. But we're excited to have Michael as our new baseball coach for the Common School.
Thank you, Bert. Nice to have you, Michael.
Thank you.
Director of Human Resources report, Mr. Circle.
Well, I was going to congratulate our new baseball coach. Congratulations. Hopefully a new assistant.
No pressure.
Just to give you a little report, I said earlier, I wanted to thank the principals, but I did a quick study of how many interviews took place over the last probably eight to 10 weeks. And we've interviewed, not me, it's not me, it's the principals have interviewed over 400 candidates for the different jobs that we've filled over these last eight to 10 weeks. They have been outstanding in communicating with each other, because you have to realize when we have three or four elementary principals, elementary openings, those principals all want some of the same candidates. So it gets pretty interesting. But they have done an outstanding job, same with middle school and high school, along with my secretary, Crystal. And I thought, oh my gosh, she's talking to us. Just an outstanding job. Forty-one teachers, 35 support staff. Hopefully, we're done with the teachers. Probably shouldn't have said Hopefully we're done with the teachers, probably shouldn't have said that.
Yeah.
But we still have a few more support staff to hire, but it's been a good, exciting three months probably to try to fill those, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Director of Finance report.
Thank you, Mrs. Jacobs. I've got three things. First, I want to thank our maintenance and custodial staff for the outstanding work they've done this summer. We had a lot of projects, several of our buildings worked short staff custodians due to employee changes and some illness and vacations and everybody rose to the challenge. We still have some maintenance projects that we're working on, including a large replacement project of the bleachers that will be ongoing. We bought, I don't know, $5,000 worth of bleacher boards that will be replaced out there as we have time, as we finish up the other projects. As always, I appreciate our building secretaries and the work they do. The first two weeks they're back are just crazy for them and they always do a stellar job. I want to remind the board that next Tuesday evening at 5 o'clock will be our budget workshop, I hope. It's still a work in progress and it's a lot different than here, than it has been in the past. In addition to that, we are going to have a discussion like we did for the field house regarding solar panel project for the high school, as I believe that dovetails nicely with the budget in that, you know, you can experience significant savings in your electrical consumption, so please, if you're able, join us next Tuesday.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent's report, Mr. Sorrow.
Thank you. Just have a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to recognize all of our new teachers that Mike has been and Principal have been busy hiring. They spent two days working in the new teacher academy and all of them are very impressive and they're ready to go, energetic, so kudos to them for the time that they spent before school, even though they had a lot of other things that they needed to do in their classroom preparing to be the best that they could be. And then also thanks to principals, students, and staff for a great start to the 2018-19 school year. Thank you.
Thank you. And Superintendent's report, Mr. Collins.
Really stole my thunder, but I had transportation as one group to publicly acknowledge and thank Katrina and her staff. Carlene's here, but it's a little bit chaotic the first days with transportation and just because we don't always have the right addresses and, you know, and they're troopers and I just know how much our drivers go bum be on in making sure each of our kids are safe at home, no matter what time it is and how long it takes, so, you know, that's a group that, the first people that meet our kids at the start of the year and so appreciate their work. Also want to mention our tailgate party this Friday first time, something we're doing to try to reach out to our new teachers, so looking forward to that. Coincides with our game that will win Friday night against Richmond, Red Devils, right, Brett Britt?
Absolutely.
Terry's here too and the technology is just, I'm amazed at the changes in all the things we're doing with technology and that wouldn't happen without strong leadership and foresight and planning. So this phone change that we're getting ready to take is huge, so I just want to acknowledge that. Our administrators, of course, I think we've had a great start to the year and that wouldn't happen without great planning and so I think it's just team effort with our teachers and I appreciate our retired teachers who are coming back and serving in various roles, whether it be as a guest instructor or as a teaching assistant. That says a lot, that they have a lot to give back to kids still. So with that said, Brent, how did our first soccer game go on our new field, our new turf?
It initiated with a Spartan and 32 over the.
So Phil looked great. I think Brian moved that thing 10 times Monday. He was going over and over and it looked great.
It's about three inches tall and we were too afraid to take it a little shorter.
Yeah. Looks good, though.
Jeff Cooley texted me that that's for a favor.
And for the good of the cause, anybody want to share anything today?
I'd just like to thank everyone for giving such a good start to the school year. It's always tough, there have been a lot of changes this year and the communication, I think, has been excellent. People that have had concerns have had their concerns addressed, particularly with transportation and the phone system, which is challenging at this point, but I think everyone, the attitude seems to be very good. And the back to school thing was so cool. Grand B won again, there's a lot of elementaries that are not too pleased, but the creativity of all of the people. The career center, I loved your men in black. Cool. And it just creates such a great way to start the school year on such a happy note and everybody just having a really good time. And if we don't enjoy what we're doing and we don't express that to the kids, how can we, how can we expect them to enjoy what they're doing and really get, understand that learning can be fun? And so if we portray that, that's going to rub off on them and I think that the back to school thing was just really, really clever this year, so. But there's word of what, that they're out to get Grand B again this year. Carlos was showing off some unknown talents.
James is already working on his twirling for next time.
I was disappointed Brian didn't dance this year. I mean, we needed more.
I think he's retired his dancing shoes. Did you retire your dancing shoes, Brian? That's not what your wife said.
Listen, I wanted to congratulate Michael, hopefully Eric, with Michael joining the baseball program again after 29 years. And not that you need any advice from this board member, Michael, but sometimes a young man comes along your program that doesn't need a whole lot of coaching, especially if he has a good head on his shoulders and he goes on to set the Spartan batting record and play college baseball and pro baseball and maybe become a head coach someday, so congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Anything else? With that, I would seek a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Warren. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mark. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign, needing adjourn.